And Brian Freeland. And the county wa- uh, I'm sorry, the at-large, we have Dusty Pless and Jerry Green. Okay, so again, two for each of the districts. You will get to cast a ballot for one. And there are three other districts.
Jerry. No, they're at large.
Chico. And let me get this right. Chico, Jeff Cavich. Close. I'm gonna let them introduce themselves, so we'll get it right. I apologize. Chico is also at the at-large position. There are also three other districts, Irwin, Inka, and Reynolds. They will remain on the board, those representatives currently, and you will choose those in two years. They will be up for election. So, uh, we're gonna go ahead and start to my right with Amy Churchill. You get one and a half minutes each candidates to introduce yourselves. There will be a thirty-second timer, okay, right in front of you. And then a red, which means finish your thought as concisely as you can, so I don't have to sit there. Then when we get to the questions, you have one minute to answer the questions. Because of the large number, there will be no rebuttal, okay? Or no further expansion. All right, Ms. Churchill, we'll start with you with one and a half minute introduction, please.
Thank you very much. Um, first, I'd like to thank the Asheville League of Women Voters for having us here tonight and hosting this forum. I think it's a great opportunity for the public to get out and become familiar with the candidates, so that they can make an informed decision. Um, my name's Amy Churchill. I live in Arden with my husband Ben and our daughter Maddie. And Maddie is a sixth grader at Coons Intermediate. Um, for several years, I've been actively involved in volunteering in the classrooms and with various PTO projects within the Robertson District. Um, I've always believed that education is one of the most valuable resources that we have. Uh, having a great education can open so many doors, regardless of where one starts out in life. And it truly is the great equalizer. And the public school system's value should be immeasurable to the community it serves. Um, with that, I believe all children deserve an equal opportunity to receive a first-class public education. It should not depend on where you live or what school you attend. High academic achievement should be the standard, not the exception. And I believe we are capable of having that in all of our schools in Buncombe County. Um, and just finally, I'd like to not only be known as, um, Buncombe County being known for the, um, home of Beer City, USA, but I would really love to see us be home as the education-first city. That's my top priority.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gray.
Thank you. And I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this event off on and allowing us to be here today. Um, a little bit about my background, I'm an incumbent. I've been on the school board for four years. Um, my educational background, I'm a graduate of Davidson College. I, uh, have an MBA from Northwestern in finance. Um, I have, uh, for several years, been a, uh, six years, I was a banker. Then I worked to work for North Carolina Outward Bound School, got a little bit of taste of education in a different way. And in the last fourteen years, I've had my own business, real estate business. I have, uh, two kids, I have a seventh grader and a tenth grader. We had a busy night to night with soccer for my middle school and open house at the high school for my daughter. Um, why am I running? I think all of us tonight are probably questioning that a little bit, why are we willing to be up here? Um, but I can't think of a more important thing to do with my time than to, um, to invest it. And I'm always trying to do something outside of work, and I can't think of a better thing to do with my time. I also think my background with finance and business is very applicable. Um, and I have been involved in the school for four years, the school board. And, um, I'm excited about what's happening, and I want to continue to be involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Ms. Franklin.
You should announce the district each time you do some voting.
Absolutely. Ms. Churchill is, uh, like you said, you are in the Robertson District. And Mr. Gray, you are in the Owen District.
Owen District.
And, uh, Ms. Franklin.
I'm Anne Franklin. Um, I'm from the North Buncombe District. I'm a, uh, I've grown up here. I've lived in the house I grew up in. Um, so, uh, I, I am a product of Buncombe County Schools and very proud of it. I taught for the school system for thirty-six years. And during that time, I believe that, and came to practice that all children should succeed. And, uh, no matter what their plight in life, I believe that education is the means by which people can overcome the circumstances of their birth. And I want to be part of, I am seated on the board at this time, and I want to, uh, I'm running again to help move the county into the twenty-first century and to make the decisions that will help the, um, us provide a kind of education for our children. Also believe that all children need to be in the presence of a capable, caring, and competent teacher. And that it is that teacher that causes the success in the classroom. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Franklin. And you, Ms. Franklin, is for North Buncombe District. I want to remind you, if you have a question, if you need a card, just raise your hand, we'll get you a card and a pen. If you already have written your question, just hold it up and we'll collect it. Ms. Freeland.
Good evening. Thank you again to the Asheville League of Women Voters for having us here. I am Brian Freeland. I am running for the North Buncombe District seat. I am from the Weaverville area. I have been here since nineteen eighty-two. And my son goes to the Weaverville Elementary School. He is a second grader. And, uh, my wife and I li- have lived here in the Asheville area, or the Weaverville area, since we've been married. And I personally have been, again, a product of the North Buncombe District school system. Graduated North Buncombe in eighty-six. And after that, my career started in the military. Retired military, twenty years, three active-duty tours, uh, overseas with the present wars that are going on. I have recently left the Asheville Police Department after seventeen years of service. And now I continue my work in retail, um, for various reasons. I currently serve on the Weaverville PTO Board, on the Vice President for the Elementary School. I've been on the board for three years. And my son is what drew me to the board and the school system. Um, I thoroughly enjoy it. Again, it was asked just a minute ago, why are we doing this? It's for the kids, number one. We have to make sure our kids are raised in the right environment, have the right education, and to be able to graduate and be able to serve in a capacity that we may eventually see them be the next chairman of commissioners or, or whatever. We gotta have them for their education.
Thank you, Mr. Freeland. Mr. Green.
Again, I also thank the League of Women Voters. My name is Jerry Green. I have my wife with me in the back, who's my best supporter and biggest supporter. I began teaching at Emma in nineteen sixty-seven. I taught at Johnston School Assistant Principal at Swanano Elementary School and retired in July. After thirty-four years as principal at Black Mountain Primary School. Now you're saying, why are you running for school board? 'Cause I've been in school all my life, and that's what God's called me to be a part of. And if you want to know what kind of job I'll do, go to Black Mountain and check with the folks where I've been. I think there's three things you do on the school board. Number one, every decision you make, you put children and students first. Number two, you hire and employ the smartest people you can find, hold them accountable, and stay out of the way and let them teach and operate the system. Number three, I think you carefully analyze the financial resources to be sure they're following the students to the classroom. I would like to serve on the board, and I'm working at the at-large seat. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Mr. Hale.
Sorry about that, Mr. Green. Hi, I'm Dan Hale. I'm running for the Owen District. Um, I was encouraged by friends and teachers, parents, at, uh, Black Mountain Primary School to go ahead and run for the Board of Education. Uh, Jerry Green was the principal for my children. I have two kids over there. And I only have a high school education, but I'm very passionate and emotional about what I want, what I've set out to do, to run for the board. Um, my two girls in the school system, I'm very proud of them. I want to see them go far. I'd like to be involved, I'm, I'm involved with the school through the PTO. My wife is a president of the PTO now. And I, and I enjoy going to the schools and seeing the teachers interact with the kids. I think it's sad to watch, um, the, the teachers bit struggle, they struggle a bit, not having everything they need to accomplish what they need to on a day-to-day basis. I think it's very challenging. I think with our budget, with the school system, I'd like to be more involved and see what I can do to help the system get better. And that's what I want to do. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hale. I'm gonna try this again. Mr. Jeff Cavich. All right. And I'm gonna run for the at-large seat.
At-large.
One and a half minutes, please.
Yes, um, I'd like to say thank you as well for everybody here, as well as all my colleagues that are running for positions. I think it's great. It's a great turnout, and it's very exciting. Um, I have lived in Buncombe County for, working on seven years. Uh, my children have been educated in the public, um, school system since kindergarten. I have a sixth grader at, uh, Coons Intermediate and a fourth grader at Avery Creek Elementary School. Um, I'm a big supporter of public education. I taught for eight years, uh, prior to my current, uh, profession. Uh, most of that time was spent overseas, working for the Department of Defense. I taught a lot of dependent schools, uh, at dependent schools for our military personnel. Also taught for a year here at Buncombe Community School in the Owen District. One thing that I've, or two things I should say that I always found, that, that I've kind of developed in my, my feelings for education is that students are our most important customers. That's what they are. And we're here as educators and as community and as parents and in government to support those children, those customers, and give them the greatest service possible. I think teachers are our greatest assets to accomplish that, and they're professionals. And, and I don't, and I think that they should be, continue to be treated that way. Um, to accomplish that, the whole goal of our education system should be developing a workforce. And I've heard that loud with the government officials that were here today. And I think we are getting into a global economy, and everything we do needs to make sure that they're prepared for that economy.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Pless.
Yes, I'm Dusty Pless. I've lived here in Buncombe County my entire life. I'm a product of Buncombe County Schools. I attended Western Carolina University, where I got a BS degree in special education. I have an MA degree in public school administration. Uh, growing up, my parents were always involved in, in the school system. Uh, my dad ran unsuccessfully one time for the school board. I ran in two thousand for the school board. Uh, I was a part, well, let me back up. I, uh, at ST's Elementary, I served as Vice, uh, Pre- uh, Vice President of the, uh, PTA and on the Advisory Council. At, uh, Valley Springs, uh, Middle School, I served as Vice President of the PTA and served on that Advisory Council. When I got to TC Robertson, I served on their Advisory Council. Back in the early, or the, back in the eighties and nineties, Buncombe County Schools were deemed to be one of the twelve worst systems for facilities in the entire United States. We passed, I think it was three bond referendums to bring, uh, our facilities up to date, which I was, I was not on the board, but I participated with. And in two thousand, I was encouraged to run for the school board. Uh, my main purpose is to put children first, and I want to do that, uh, wholeheartedly. Uh, I've been proud of the boards I've served on. I am the, I'm not the oldest one on the board, which Franklin reminded me of that, but I'm the, I'm the longest-serving on the board. And by, uh, doing so, uh, we've had all kinds of, uh, uh, we've had good boards since two thousand.
Mr. Pless, thank you very much. And, uh, Mr. Sizemore.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you to the League of Women Voters. I think if there's, uh, if there's accolades to go around, there certainly are. I hope we're going to the League of Women Voters. Thank you all very much for hosting this forum.
All right. Ms. Franklin.
Thank you. I'm Steve Sizemore. Uh, I'm the Robertson representative on the Board of Education that, uh, currently, and I'm seeking reelection, uh, to that seat. I've served on the Board of Education since two thousand and six. I was appointed to fill an expired term, so I filled half a term, uh, ran in two thousand and eight, was elected, uh, and now I'm on the ballot again for reelection. Um, I think that it's important, people can talk a lot about what they, uh, plan to do, but I think that one of the things that is important for voters is to understand who the person is and where they came from. Uh, and it's been important to me, and I want to make sure that people understand. Uh, I'm, I'm actually a, not only a product of, of Buncombe County Schools, I actually grew up in the schools. And when I say that, I literally grew up in the schools because my parents were both teachers. So I was at school before most of people were at school, because the teachers always arrived early, uh, and I was one of the last people to leave. Um, and, uh, my wife and, and, uh, I both graduated from Robertson District Schools. My, uh, oldest daughter has, uh, graduated and, uh, from Robertson. Uh, and my twins will hopefully graduate, uh, this May. And, uh, that, that involvement in the schools, the community involvement, is something that I think is very important out. I think that that's, uh, an integral part of the decision-making that we have as board members.
All right, Mr. Sizemore, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, uh, we'll begin with the questions. Not everybody needs to answer every one. Uh, some are directed specifically to candidates, and we will address it to you. However, others, we will invite to join in if you want to participate and answer that. If you don't choose to answer, don't, but just signal to me that you do want to answer a question, and we will make sure to, to get you in time allowing. Now, you will have one minute to respond to these questions. We'll start with one. Uh, I'm gonna kind of combine these. Uh, prior to deciding to run for the school board, obviously for existing school board, current school board members, this may not be appropriate. How many board meetings have you attended and how are you involved in the school system? We're gonna tie that in with this. What do you feel is the most important role of the Board of Education? And how does that role impact students' education and instruction? Anyone? Let's answer that.
I'll respond to that, if it's okay.
You certainly may, because I was gonna put somebody on the spot. Mr. Green.
I've attended school board meetings since nineteen sixty-seven. I've probably attended more school board meetings than these folks up here that are on the board. I have noticed that times they last to one o'clock in the morning. Now they're lasting longer, too. Let me tell you what I view some of this, when you tie it together, if you're transparent and folks know what you're talking about and questions are answered. And when questions are asked, you try to answer them. If you don't know, you go find out. If you do that, the public understands what's going on. And that's the main reason for that.
All right. Mr. Hale.
Uh, I've only attended about five meetings, and that's part of what's motivated me to get involved with the school. I think that the Board of Education should be a, they should have good conversation and two-way street. And I'm not seeing that. I'm seeing a real breakdown in the Board of Education. And I don't see how they can get anything done and say good policy when they're fighting all the time. So I feel like I want to be a part of it and see if I can help them move along a little bit better.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. Is there anyone else here, too? I'll certainly, Ms. Churchill.
I'll just answer one, one part of that question, which is what the role of the board is. And I believe it's to hire a superintendent. Um, that's the most important job we do. And then we oversee the overall policy. Um, we approve the budget. Uh, but I think it's important not to get too involved in the day-to-day activities of the, of the hiring of teachers. Um, I think it's important, as Mr. Green said earlier, that we hire a good superintendent. We have a good leadership team. The principals, um, hire the folks and we let them do their job, and we hold them accountable if they don't.
Ms. Churchill.
Hi, yes, hi. I have, um, actually attended board meetings on and off for the past three years and, um, more frequently in this past year. Um, and I really think that one of the main things that the school board, um, should be doing is be good stewards of the money that, um, has been allocated for our school system. Uh, we all know that there's been budget cuts over the years, and it doesn't look like we're going to be getting a money tree anytime soon. So I think we just really need to step back and, and take a look at the resources that we have and, and how best to use them. Um, and then I also think communication should be something that the board strives for. And when I say communication, I mean between administration, teachers, parents, and even students. I think that it is a two-way street. And, um, the opportunity to engage in conversation would be very beneficial for the board and the community. All right, thank you.
We'll go with the, I'm gonna call you Chico, if that's okay. Chico, and I apologize.
Um, and I'll, I'll be honest, I can't say that I've actually ever attended a board meeting in this county. Um, one of the things is I've just not been aware of what, when they occurred and, and what kind of, um, role that it plays in our education, and that's always concerned me, which is why I'm getting involved at this point. Like, uh, Ms. Churchill said, I think one very important role of the, uh, Board of Education is to get as much of the community involved. I think we have a lot of manufacturing, we have a lot of other industries here, and I think if we work with those individuals in our community, community, uh, we can help develop students that are ready to slide into that workforce and be active members of our, of our citizenship.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Sizemore.
Thank you. Um, it's interesting, because from a very broad perspective, uh, the, the individuals that serve on the board are, serve to represent the community. Um, and, and I think that sometimes we get caught up in what the details of the job are involved, that, that we forget that, or at times we forget that. But we are elected to represent the interests of the community. And, and one of the reasons that I indicated who I was and, and, and what happened to me as I grew up, so that, that you people would understand. I can tell you that I make, uh, I'm gonna make a certain decision on a certain point in a certain way, but until you understand all the aspects of why, uh, and, and the background that the person has, you need to, that, that's the, that's the person that you're making the decision to elect. Um, from a communication standpoint, we, we are representatives of the community in that we are talking to people in the community to find out what's going on. They come to us, we go to them. The same thing is true at the school level. Advisory councils, PTOs, PTA's, uh, and the communication with the, uh, teachers and the students in the classroom.
All right, Mr. Sizemore, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pless.
Um, I've probably haven't attended as many, well, I know I haven't attended as many, uh, board meetings as Jerry Green, but however, uh, even before I got on the board, I was very active, I was very active and very involved. And, you know, our job is, again, to hire a superintendent, to make sure that we have very, very, very competent people from top to bottom, let them run the system and be the eyes and ears to, for the community.
All right, thank you. Next question. How much input does or should the school board have, or should or are decisions made by the paid administration? How much input does or should the school board really have? Or are decisions made, or should they be made, by the paid administration? I want to, uh, remind you, if you have a question, to please raise your hand, and we'll get you an index card and a pen. Or if you have a question already written out, just hold it up and we'll pick it up. Mr. Sizemore.
Thank you, Jerry. Um, several of the members of the, of this panel have already indicated that the Board of Education hires a superintendent. We do not run the daily operations of the school system. That, that is, that is allocated to the superintendent and, and, uh, the decisions from that point are made, uh, by the superintendent. We develop policy. We establish a policy that's adopted, uh, that provides and facilitates for the efficient operation of the school systems. Um, and it provides the framework for the superintendent to make, uh, his or her decisions. Um, that is the way that the school system operates, that's the way it's supposed to operate. It is not intended to be micromanaged by the Board of Education. It's not, that is an inefficient means of, uh, operating a school system.
Anybody else here? Mr. Green.
May I respond a little bit to that, too? Did you know Buncombe County has twenty-five thousand, six hundred-plus students, nearly four thousand employees? Uh, buses, two-hundred-and-ninety-one of them, that run sixteen thousand-plus miles a day? Now, when you turn loose, as a board, a board needs to know what's going on and hold the people accountable that does that, based on budget issues they deal with. When you look at the budget, may I speak to the budget in just a minute? Uh, I believe about sixty percent of it comes from the state, fifteen percent of it from the federal, twenty-five of it from the local. When you look at that money and how to do it, you must allow somebody else to do it, but you need the information to go by, because we make decisions based on that.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Hale.
I don't think we can operate this, uh, school system without a board. I don't think you can have the ship just go and ask you. You have to have some directive, uh, you know? For, you know, for instance, uh, I don't, if the community doesn't know that the school board is pushing through to build a STEM school on a, a possible toxic waste site, um, and not willing to talk about it, the public needs to know these things. Now, there's things you can do, like test. It's real simple. And I wouldn't want my kids to go to school at a, in a, in a building that could possibly be contaminated. Uh, I, I think that there has to be the Board of Education to help direct the administration. And I think the administration's doing a really good job with what they're working with, too.
Mr. Hale, thank you. Ms. Churchill, Ms. Franklin.
Um, well, as far as how much input the school board should have in the day-to-day operations, um, I'm gonna kind of put it in an aspect that I'm used to. I'm in healthcare. Um, and I take care of patients, and I certainly wouldn't want somebody to come in and, and who doesn't have experience in healthcare and try to tell me how to do my job. But I would rely on, say, the family members to provide additional input and, um, you know, be willing to listen to them, because I think when you involve, um, a group of interested individuals, you get a better outcome. It's a team approach.
Thank you, Ms. Churchill, Ms. Franklin.
I believe that, um, as it has been said, that the board is to make policy and to hire people that are capable of doing the job and leaving them alone and letting them do their job. However, um, as a board member, um, there is a fine dance that goes on between the board and the administration. I believe that board members are, um, eyes and ears for the administration. And that by being able to, um, provide information from the community to the administration, that better decisions are made. However, those decisions are made by the administration, not by the board.
All right, thank you, Ms. Franklin. Mr. Gray.
Yeah, this may come up in a different question, but I just wanted to respond to the environmental issue that came up. We are testing, we tested a couple months ago or a month ago. Um, one of the wells closest to the school, and it came up, um, no detection of hazardous material. We're drilling another well, um, and we're gonna test that. And I'm all for testing. I don't think anybody here would want to not test, so I don't know where that's coming from.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gray. All right, next question. Would you consider asking the state legislature to allow the Article thirty-nine sales tax? Now, this statistic has not been fact-checked by me, but it says about twelve million dollars per year, now designated for school construction in Buncombe, to be spent on teachers and students and the classroom? Ms. Churchill.
Absolutely. I, I think what we need to do is look at our money as a whole. And sometimes you do that, you know, we all do that at home with our budgets. We only have a certain amount of money to, um, use. And if we're needing, um, a new roof, then maybe we don't go to Starbucks every day. Um, so I guess if we need the new buildings and upgrades to our existing buildings, then yes, money should be allocated to that. But we certainly cannot forget that while we have new buildings, we do need to provide the teachers and textbooks and, um, all the other supplies to make that not just a building, but an actual school.
Ms. Churchill, we have a few over here. We'll start with Mr. Pless.
Um, yep. To your original question about the sales tax?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I would. However, you've got to keep in mind, it's just like your house. You have to keep your, when your house is, when you were living in a house, you have to keep it up, so you have to, to make sure that your facilities are, are, are well, uh, planned for. Um, um, I've lost my whole train of thought. That goes without saying.
Come back to you in a few seconds, if you'd be. Yes, sir. Mr. Green.
May I respond to that, too? North Carolina spends in Buncombe County about seventy-six hundred dollars a year to educate a child. The state is about eighty-two hundred dollars, and the national average is about ten thousand and six hundred dollars. Buncombe County is the eighty-fifth, we're eighty-fifth in the, uh, out of a hundred-and-fifteen school systems of spending money for education, yet we're the eleventh-largest tax system. So the question occurs to me is why would we spend seventy-four hundred dollars in Buncombe County, but the state average being? state average being 82, 600? Well, it'd be some way that money could be adjusted somewhere to follow the student to the classroom.
All right. Mr. Pliss, we'll come back to you in 30 more seconds.
Okay. I guess, I guess my point was, and the existing, the sitting board members know this along with Mr. Green, a Board of Education has at most, at most, 10% discretion over the budget. Otherwise, the federal government and the state tell us what to do with the money.
Anybody else here to address that? Mr. Sizmore?
Brief app. One of the things that Mr. Green's indicated was that we were 85th in expenditures. That's, the number, 85th is right, but we're 85th in the state in funding from the state. That's not necessarily the state expenditure. That's how much the state invests in Buncombe County. But we are the 11th-largest school system in the state. This microphone doesn't like it.
Get closer to it.
Get closer, okay. All right, I was thinking I need to push it away. Thank you very much.
Get closer.
One of the things from, with regard to Article 39, that's very important to understand, is that that was legislation that was put in place to provide Buncombe County with supplemental funds for building construction. In the event that that is changed in its funding stream, that legislation is likely to go away. That will then cost Buncombe County money, as opposed to benefiting the students of Buncombe County. One of the things that we need to recognize is Buncombe County Board of Education's motto, it's at the back of the building, or the back of the room, and every decision that we make is to make that decision the best interest of those students. And taking away that Article 39 money would not be the best interest of the students.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else here to respond? All right, moving on. Do you support merit pay for the superintendent? If so, why? And if not, why not? Any takers? We'll start with Mr. Green, and then we'll go to Cheeko.
If you have merit pay for the superintendent, why would you not have it for the other 4,000 employees? Now, I've worked in a system where that operates. That is difficult, believe it or not, to do because of so many variables. It's like you get a classroom with 20 kids. It's hard to determine what you're doing with that 20 kids. Now, when you set it up with a superintendent, and the superintendent gets it, that means, like I understood today, Buncombe County is probably about third in the state with testing. Now, where the praise should go for that, is not to the superintendent, that should go to the teachers and the ones in the classroom doing the work.
All right, thank you, Mr. Green. And Cheeko?
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Green. My biggest concern with merit pay is just how is that defined at superintendent level, and then how does that trickle down and actually affect what happens in the classroom? Again, teachers are the most important assets in this county when we talk about education, and when we talk about merit pay, that's where we should see the, you know, where the benefit occurs. Again, how is that defined, and what is it, does it involve teaching to a test so that a superintendent can, you know, hit those merits? I don't necessarily agree with that, and I don't think it's a successful way to run an education.
All right, Mr. Sizmore, please.
I'm not in favor of merit pay for the superintendent, or am I in favor of merit pay for the teacher, but I will tell you this, there is a merit pay system. In essence, the Board of Education hires a superintendent, sets the superintendent's salary of instruction that's established by the state school board and the legislature. And so we are a merit pay system to the extent that we're watching what the superintendent does and work with, making sure that he or she works within his guidelines, or her guidelines. One of the things that has been indicated is that when the school system is successful, when the students, for example, what Jerry just indicated, is that we now know that our students in Buncombe County again scored at the third highest level for SAT takers in the state of North Carolina, for any schools that have at least two high schools in their school system. Certainly, that goes, the praise for that goes to the teachers. It also goes to the students that took those tests, the parents that provided the support for them, the superintendent that established the structure for those teachers to have opportunity in the schools to provide the teaching skills that were necessary, and the Board of Education that established policies that allowed that to happen.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sizmore. All right, next question. Workforce and job training has been mentioned. How does that compare, and what can you do about the value of education itself, college prep, and critical thinking skills?
I just, one of the, one of the things that I, as I mentioned, I was overseas, though I was working for the Department of Defense and teaching American students, but I was able to see other models that occur in, around the world. And one of the things was, you know, the assumption is that if you're going to prepare students, you have to prepare them for a college education. Frankly, as an educator in the classroom, that's not where every child is eventually going to succeed. And so what we need to do is offer something that will prepare those children and those students for success in our communities. Whether that is going into college, or whether that is going into a vocation is essential. And, you know, like I said, there are models out there that I think we, as a country, not just within this county, but certainly we can begin here, can look at and learn from, and not necessarily compare and say, geez, we don't succeed like them. What are we doing wrong? Well, let's look at what they are doing to succeed and use that instead.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we're moving towards a global economy. We're in a global economy, and I think the school board is, I mean, the school system's doing some good things. It's hard, I've been impressed, because in the last four years, the budgets have been cut, and yet we're striving to do little things incrementally to make us more global. We have such things as the, we just, we're one of 14 schools in the system that are part of the North Carolina Global School System. We have a second year, we have a, we're running a Spanish immersion program at Lenard, in 30 seconds. We are doing Project Lead the Way, which is a STEM project in middle school, and we're looking at doing a new STEM high school. We're going to compete, our workforce has to compete globally, and I believe even in a time of recession, we're striving to accomplish that. I can't wait to have money and actually do some things, some more things.
All right, last question. Again, Ms. Churchill, give it.
Well, I was just going to say, as far as locally, I think what we should do is involve businesses within the community to offer mentors in the schools. And when I say businesses, I mean, that could be anything from a plumbing business to doctor's office, but just giving the kids an opportunity to see what areas they'd like to maybe invest in, investigate further. You know, Asheville's just home to so many different, was I getting it locked in? You know, there's just so many different jobs that we have out here in this area, and I just think that it would be worth our time to get the community more involved in educating those children on what they want to do when they're done.
All right, last question. Is it true Buncombe County Schools does not have a line item budget? Why not, and should that be changed? Any takers?
Well, I was just going to say, you know, not being part of that process, I can't say with authority on how the budget is done, but I will say that, however the budget is done, it certainly should be looked at, and like I said before, to see where we can save money and shift the money to the areas that need it the most. It shouldn't be so black and white that you can't pull money from here to cover this expenditure. We just need to be able to look through and do like any budget, and determine what things can be moved around, and just put our heads together on it.
Ms. Franklin?
The public, Buncombe County Schools, as any school district in the state, is given a budget, and money comes from Raleigh in specified places. And we do not have, nor does any other school system have, the ability to move money around. You get money that comes, and it comes to pay teachers. You get money that comes to us, and it goes to pay teacher assistance. And so unlike your home budget, where you can move things around, you can't do that so much in the school system.
I'd have to really question, you know, I have heard that there was a insurance renewal policy that went up over 30%, and there were no competing bids when asked, the board was asked, were there any competing bids? No, they went through with it. Whether that was done lawfully or not, I would say it was done lawfully. I feel like there's no common sense there. If you know that your insurance policy's going to go up 30%, wouldn't you want to question that, even in your own personal life? Or are you going to accept a salesman's word that that's a good deal, let's go with it? Would it have been easy enough for the board to say, let's get a few competing bids? And really, if the budget's going to keep, continue to get cut, education always gets cut, don't we need to be smarter with the money that we have? And if we're able to shift some around, I can't, I cannot believe that we can't find some dollars and shift it around where it's needed in the classroom to take care of the kids.
Mr. Sizmore?
Thank you. You know, we hear on occasion from a few people that there is no line item budget. Quite frankly, it's just not accurate. We've got, we've got reams and reams of paper. It's really, it's almost obscene, the amount of paper that it takes to produce the budget and produce that for Buncombe County, to be able to see where the expenditures are. We have breakdowns on those expenditures for each individual that is paid, for each department, for each type of expenditure. I'm not sure of what more of a line item we could ask for than the, than what Ms. Parker, who receives accolades throughout the state for the work as the finance officer for Buncombe County, could produce for us and for the, for the public than is already being produced. That information is presented at a budget workshop, it's presented during budget meetings. We have, any amendments are done at regular public meetings, and the budget is available in its multiple formats on the website for the Board of Buncombe County Board of Education.
Mr. Sizmore, thank you.
Thank you.
Do they have others who want? Okay, well, this is the last question, but behind Mr. Craig?
I'm sorry to keep going.
I've got a few clues and comments.
Okay. All right. I just want to echo what Steve said. I mean, it's so frustrating to read in the paper and see that we don't, people saying we don't have a line item budget when we do. We approved a budget, or we presented a line item budget for this year 2012, 2013, in January. It's on the website, go and look at it. It's broken down per person, it's by code, and it's there. That's all.
Okay. And Mr. Green?
In relation to the budget, I think there's about 60,000-plus items in it. Now, when it's that thick, my question I would occur was, occurred to me was, who looks at it? And my opinion is, it ought be looked at, because 85% of the budget that comes into Buncombe County is used for personnel. About the only way to save money is personnel programs and purchases, so what it would require? And I have done this over the years, sit down and go through the pages of it, and look and find out who's paid what. I think you have to do that, and you have to look at each item like that. It is line item, but it requires close looking.
Mr. Pliss?
Can you, okay. Like I, I'd like to reiterate again, you have, the current board has about 8-10% of discretion in what the budget is, and our chief financial officer, Mary Parker, is the envy of the state. You've got the best financial officer, bar none, in running Buncombe County Schools of any system in North Carolina.
Thank you, Mr. Pliss. Well, I hope you all are encouraged by the information you've heard here. I hope you've had some of your questions answered. These are the forms where you can do that.